Let's call our July meeting of the Iredle Stateful Schools Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and we're excited to be getting ready to administer the oath of office again tonight to, in a formal way, to welcome the new board members and the one returning board member during the last election back to the board. Let's begin our meeting in the usual fashion by asking everyone to bow for a moment of silent meditation, remembering the real reason that we exist, and that's to represent the students of our district and to do the work that allows them to have the best opportunity to gain an education that prepares them to live in the 21st century. So if you will bow with me the first few moments, a moment of silence. Thank you. Let's stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I'll introduce Jim Mixon, who's our current clerk of court for Iredle County, and ask him to come and administer the oath of office to the newly elected and re-elected school board members. Mr. Max James from District One, Ms. Cindy Haynes from District Three, Mr. Martin Page from District Five, and Ms. Anna Bonham from District Seven. Thanks, Jim.
Aye.
Aye, Max James.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
As a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
Is that we got?
So there we go.
Very well.
Thank you.
My last, do you would, station name and do your act immediately?
Aye.
Aye, Cindy Haynes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
And as a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
As a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
So there we go.
My last, do you would, station name and do your act immediately?
Aye.
Aye, Cindy Haynes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
And as a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
As a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
So there we go.
Aye, station name.
Aye, station name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
And as a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
As a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
So there we go.
So there we go.
Thank you.
My last, do you would, station name and do your act immediately?
Aye.
Aye, I am, um.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of your office.
Of my office.
And as a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
As a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
So there we go.
So there we go.
Thank you.
My last, do you would, station name and do your act immediately?
Aye.
Aye, I am, um.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that you will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of your office.
Of my office.
And as a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
As a member of the Iredle Stateful Board of Education.
So there we go.
So there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
See you, Jim.
Just to mention that while these gentlemen are here to recognize that we do have a runoff election tomorrow, I think they're busy probably tonight and tomorrow, but we have Mr. Jim Mixon asking for reelection and Duck Wyatt, the other candidate that's on the agenda. So just to introduce you tonight. Thanks for being here, gentlemen. We'll next move on to our consent agenda. Under administration, we have no items, so we'll move on to the non-consent agenda. Excuse me, we have personnel items under the consent agenda. Acceptance of resignations, retirements, rehires, terminations, leaves of absence, acceptance of classified personnel, approval of licensed personnel, and approval of administrative appointments. Dr. LaSagne.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board. You have had the opportunity to review the updated July personnel report. Are there any questions?
I have one. I'm not asking personal information on this staff, okay? I'm asking procedural. Under leaves of the absence.
Mm-hmm.
The sixth staff that was on a leave from March 19th to April 19th.
Yes.
2013?
Yes, that would signify that there was some revision to those dates based on paperwork that comes in, and that does happen time to time on an individual, so I can tell you on that individual, if there's a revision of paperwork, it has to come back through and be approved by the board.
So it's just now coming through?
It's just now coming through based on some revision of paperwork that comes, often from a doctor's office or something like that, if there's anything like that, or if they've been on some other type of leave and those dates have to be adjusted, it does have to come back through the queue.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. Any other questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, that concludes our consent agenda. We also have meeting minutes from June, the June 2nd Committee of the Whole, June 9th, Board of Education, and June 25th, special called meeting minutes. If there are no additions or corrections to those minutes, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items and the minutes from the June meetings.
I have a correction.
Yes, ma'am.
In the Committee of the Whole, June 2nd, and the Board of Education meeting, June 9th, under the child nutrition bids, I was under the impression that it was supposed to be five cents to nine cents instead of 50 cent to 90 cent.
You're saying that should be a 0.05 to 0.09?
Correct. I believe, Mr. Kelly, you can question that.
Yeah, we questioned that at the time, and that is what she said, five to nine. It wasn't 50 to 90. Do we have any idea?
The typo and the minute, we'll correct.
Okay.
I'll correct that.
Okay.
Any other corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, do we hear a motion then to approve the minutes with that correction and the items on the consent agenda?
I make the motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the non-consent agenda items. We have our Title I application, Melissa White.
Good evening. I'm standing in tonight for Ms. Diane Morgan, who's the Title I Director. She presented at the Cal meeting last week her Title I application for the 14-15 school year. I'm here again to present it formally at the board meeting for a vote of approval. I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
Have we discussed this in more detail last week? Are there any other questions or points for discussion that board member would like to raise? If not, do we hear a motion that we approve the Title I application as presented?
I'll make that motion that we approve the Title I application as it is being presented.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Get that motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Facilities Use Committee Recommendations, Dr. Miller. See, who's presenting, Dr. Miller? I'm sorry.
Dr. Miller requested this morning that he be moved to the end of the agenda. He had a prior commitment, and will be here later.
Yeah, if we could put him on as the last item, he's going to a funeral visitation.
Okay. All right, then we'll move that down to the bottom of the list and move on then with our policy first readings. We have first item C, technology of responsible use, Dr. Blatner.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, thank you. You have before you Policy 3225-4312-7320, which we discussed in Committee of the Whole about responsible use policy. With this, it added some information about technologies that could be connected to our network and allowing staff have an opportunity to connect personal mobile devices, and it then specified other things that we've been working with students as they take devices home. We discussed, like I said, of the Committee of the Whole. I'm here to answer any questions you might have and recommend that we move this to table to next month to look again.
I just have one question.
Sure.
I'm sure there's a way, but what we're saying here is that if they use their own personal device, we have a method by which they couldn't use it for things that we did not want them to use it for? Is that what we're saying?
Our network is secure to prevent most of that as well, but if we ever had to check on something, it provides us a method in which to check on things where...
Okay. We did have, we do have a safeguard, but this provides an extra method to be able to not allow that to happen. Is that correct?
That is correct.
If they wanted to use their own personal devices?
Right.
Thank you.
You all.
Any comments or questions about this particular policy? If not, then Dr. Blatner, go ahead, and item D, the Policy 3226-4205 on Internet Safety.
This one is a recommendation from the North Carolina School Board Association, where we put into our policy that it is an obligation for a student or staff member that believes that the filter is not working, that they are to report that, so that we can make corrections for that. It also allows for a process which is already in place to challenge sites that they think are unblocked unduly, that needs to be unblocked through that, and we have, like I said, we have that in place as well. We discuss again Committee of the Whole, but any other questions we might have on there?
Questions or comments? Then we move on to Policy Number 6524 on Network Security.
Network security is mainly updating the language, changing it from NCYS to student information systems, so every time we change the system, we don't have to change policy. It also changes malware, changes virus to malware, which is a more general term that will encompass as more software that could do harm to our network.
Questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to Mr. Armstrong, Policy 4250/5075/7316, the North Carolina Address Confidentiality Program.
Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, last week you heard the first reading for the new policy entitled North Carolina Address Confidentiality Program that seeks to provide a work and school environment free from violence on the threat of, and the threat of violence against employees, students, or other persons. We have not received any comments for this past week, and so tonight I'm asking for an adoption of this policy.
It's first reading, right?
First reading, yeah.
Did it, I had a reading on last week.
Okay. So you're asking for this to be a voting item tonight as a second reading? Ordinarily, just for clarification, I don't know if there's a reason we need to do this earlier, you know, for students returning, but ordinarily, the first readings are done at the Cal meeting, and then formally a first reading tonight.
Okay.
And then second reading next month.
All right, I guess this will be formally the first reading.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay, and then go ahead about the security of the facilities, Policy Number 9220.
Okay, again, on last week at Cal, we introduced the security of facilities. It basically provides local law enforcement and energy management agencies with schematic diagrams of all of our school facilities and keys to the main interests of all our school facilities. And basically, it's, the only change is that everything is drawn to scale when it comes to the plans of the school, and so just basically presenting formally the first reading tonight for that policy. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
And next, we'll move to Policy Number 6420, Contracts with the Board, first reading, Ms. White.
Thank you. This is first reading, like I said, for Policy 6420. We asked that the board entertain increasing the threshold for contracts or purchases for approval by the board from 50,000 to 90,000. This is done so that Policies 6420 and 6430 are in alignment. 6430 sets the formal bid threshold at 90,000, so we'd like for the contract approval level to be at $90,000 also.
Comments or questions? If not, then move on to item I, the Policy Number 6430, the state purchasing requirements for equipment, materials, and supplies.
Again, this is first reading. There is one reference, I think there's just one in this policy, to the approval threshold for contracts, so we simply need to change that if the board approves the previous policy from 50,000 to 90,000.
Comments or questions?
Thank you.
Comments or questions?
Thank you.
While we still wait for Dr. Miller to come back in, we can move to public comment. We have one speaker assigned to speak, Scott Clontz.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, the Northview IB School is having Mr. Jamie Volmer come and speak at several symposium seminars in August, August 4th, August the 5th, at Charles Mack and at McGray Auditorium, and scanning through his book just recently, one of the passages in here was related to the fact that he was discussing with a school secretary about school issues, and he said he thought about it for a moment, and then he did something as a presenter, as fraught was danger, he decided to go off script. The reason being is that he learned that if there's one person that you probably could trust at a school, it was a school secretary. He posed the question to the group, "We've talked about what's going on outside in the world, what can we do inside? What are we doing wrong?" Some of the quotes from the school people, from the school personnel. "We're defensive, we're arrogant, we fight about money in public, we blame everyone else for our problems, we don't listen very well, we give lip service to parental involvement, we don't take care, take, don't care what the community thinks, we talk down to a certain parents," and on and on. At a symposium a few weeks later, one of the speakers, presenters for Mr. Volmer, presented the quote, "You're going to have to engage your customers in a one-to-one conversation to build the relationships you need." Dr. Cash, last week, you admonished the board members, the new board members, and the current board members, that they should look themselves in the mirror to see what they attract, and as you continued your conversation, you made reference to the fact that they should not become shit magnets. I took high offense to that because with my attendance here in the last six years, I guess I could qualify as the object of your dismay. I hope that the people in District Two can pick up the phone and call you. I hope that they can question what you do, I hope they can praise what our system does, what Mr. Johnson does, but I hope also, with this renowned writer and presenter on public education that's coming to town, admonishes all of us in education to listen to everyone that you don't turn a blind ear to anybody in your district. I'd like to congratulate Max James for his win. Max and I both talk to a lot of people in our community. I'm sure we talk way too long to some and not long enough to others. There's a lot of shit in North Iredle. Most of us growing corn and soybeans. I don't think any one of them is a taxpayer, a citizen, or a parent of any student in this county. I appreciate what you guys do in your service. I want you to do more. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Are there any other members of the audience would like to speak to the board? If not, we'll return back to our non-consent agenda, to item B, Facilities Use Committee Recommendations, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. I apologize for being late. I had a funeral receiving that I had to attend. Sort of hard when your best friend passes, so it was a little bit hard, but anyway, yes, the Facilities Use Committee did recommend a couple of policy changes. These are not major. There are two, basically two paragraphs that we would like to attend to. The first is, and this, by the way, is Policy 5030, Community Use of Facilities, and the first change is in Section C, has to do with fee structure. It doesn't change the fee structure, but it does add a fourth category. We had a group of, that was supporting students and providing services to students through the recreation, that was not a government-funded recreation, but it is volunteers, so we needed to put a group in to attend to those folks. So that is Category 3 now, and Category 3 becomes Category 4. I'll be glad to answer any questions related to those and just some verbiage that was to clarify and make it easier for folks to understand what those are all about. The other paragraph is Paragraph 5 in Section E. There again, it's just a clarification, it's just some verbiage that we felt like could be a little bit clearer to the public, and identifies the charges that will be charged to people who use our facilities related to labor, related to people who work. Be glad to answer any questions on those two. labor, related to people who work. Be glad to answer any questions on those two.
Kenny Ut, I got a question. In your Category Two, the groups like Troutman Youth or North Iredale Youth Organizations, do they have to still, that are under the Iredale County Rec Department, do they pay for the lights?
They do not pay any fees, any lights, anything. There's actually a quarterly fee that the Recreation Department pays to cover those costs.
There was some questions some of them had about that.
Okay, they do not.
Other questions or comments?
I've got a question, or?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, we talked about it in a committee of the whole in June. I brought up the point of political fundraisers. I, it is my belief, I think we need to address this, whether we, you know, allow that to happen, and put it in whichever category, or decide that it's a no-go. I, I think we need to address that, so in the future, when this topic comes up, we'll be proactive.
Typically, that would fall in a category, government agencies or government groups. It's really a, it could be a good clarification, probably, for future reference.
Are you saying it's in category, which one?
Yeah, typically, it's listed under categories that are organizations, that are other governmental organizations. The Elections Board uses our facilities for voting. So I would see that as probably under that, but we can clarify that if that would be of benefit.
You're saying it's category four?
Um, well, let me just look very closely.
Or, no, two, your statement's two.
Yeah, be category two.
But if it's an individual running for an office?
That's, that's for this board to discuss. Yeah, that's for this board to decide. And it has been done, so this board needs to decide if that is the direction you would like to continue.
Has it been commonly done?
Not, not that often, no.
And I'd like to add, too, that there have been other political events that are held at schools, and they pay the full rental price, they, they complete the required paperwork. You know, for instance, I know that there was precinct meetings that the Republican Party held at one time, and they would have them at some of the schools. You know, there've been other, there've been other functions and that sort of thing. Would that also fall under that category?
I think it would. Usually, we work with governmental agencies, Elections, like I say, Elections Board, and the political parties, whichever party it might be. We try to stay nonpartisan. So it's really up to this board as to how you would like to have that.
I would like to read from General Statute one sixty-three dash ninety-nine, "Use of school and other public buildings for political meetings." It goes through describing some things, but it just clearly says that, "Is here by authorized, directed to permit use of such buildings without charge except custodial and utility fees by political parties as defined by General Statute one sixty-three dash ninety-six, for the express purpose of annual, biannual precinct meetings and county and district conventions," period.
I'm at your discretion. I'll be glad to. If there, I mean, I think it falls under category two, but that's.
Only for political parties that are, those express purposes is the only way it's legal under General Statute according to one sixty-three dash ninety-nine, which I think maybe we ought to have our lawyer look at, but.
Right. If you'd like to me, me to table this, I can take it back.
I think you could give us some direction tonight that let us move ahead with the categories that you don't have any questions about, and get Mr. McMillan to give you a written opinion about that.
I agree. I mean, I don't think we need to keep sports teams from using it because of that. I just, it'd be better served to be discussed at one of our work meetings. But there are a couple of issues about it.
As it relates to political parties, or political?
Well, there's two different things. The political parties have a legal right to use it for those things, and it, it's under political meetings.
Right.
So then again, are we allowing public, are we allowing people to use school facilities for fundraisers? And once passed, and the pass is water under the bridge, so let's just try to make sure that we don't have, that we come up with something that's legal. I think we'll need to have our lawyer involved in that.
If you, if you recall, one of the last recommendation that the Facilities Use Committee made was to review the for-profit or fundraising groups, to go back and take a really hard look at those. And I think that, that's without saying, we've got not only those political groups that do fundraising, but we have other groups that would like to use the facilities for fundraising, for instance, AAU basketball, and some of these other things that, that we need to look at. Our policy has always been no for-profit.
Well, I think there's a big difference in a basketball team having a fundraiser and a political fundraiser when we put signs in the yard that indicate, for preference for anyone that's running for office on school property. I, I think, Mr. Johnson, your email that I have here expressed that concern, so perhaps we can.
Yeah, and I, if you give us permission tonight, we can go ahead so that we can engage these athletic teams that'll be cranking up here in August. And we'll get an opinion from Mr. McMillan and bring it back to you at your Cal meeting in August.
Well, I think we need to talk to the principals also because this email states, say unanimously requested that we not allow candidates to visit schools.
Yeah, and that, that was along the lines of meeting with political candidates after school, teachers' meetings and things of that nature. Yeah. So I think we're talking about two different things here, but if I'm understanding this correctly, you guys have some questions about renting facilities for political activity, and you would like for us to get a legal opinion about that.
Yeah, I mean, and we need to make that clear if it's not, who can rent it and who can't?
Right.
When they can and when they can't, if you can have a fundraiser or not have a fundraiser as an individual.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be happy to get Mr. McMillan to research that for you and bring you back a written report.
Did he not already give an opinion when that situation arose?
Yeah, we called him, and he gave an oral opinion that it was okay to proceed with that activity.
My thought is just put it in category four. Let that organization or those individuals, elected or wannna, you know, wannabes, complete the proper paperwork, pay the fees, and do it, I mean, you guys have done a whole lot of work, this task force. That's just my opinion.
I praise you for your task for, the task force, what they did. And it's the most important thing because what you give us is for the kids. And I'm all for letting the kids, and you know that, and all you know. I'm all for letting the kids use it. Sometimes I just, you know, it's just like some of the ballgames you go to. If the adults would all go home, the kids would be having a good time. So, you know.
Well, that was the purpose of the task force, was to get this feedback, so.
I'm not sure what the political aspect of it is the same, but it's under the same heading, so I understand why we're discussing it now.
Okay.
Would we be okay as a board to go ahead so that we don't get held up on the sports activities, go ahead and pass this as it's written, since the political activities aren't specifically addressed one way or another? And then, once we get an opinion from Mr. McMillan, and have discussion among the school principals, we could entertain at the next Cal meeting, an administrative recommendation for us, and then we can discuss that at the board level, and then make an amendment or an addition to this policy at that point. Would that be satisfactory?
Absolutely. Let's let the kids play ball. We can fuss sometimes else. Thank you.
Would you like to make that motion, please? That we approve this as written?
It's not, it's just first.
First reading, first reading.
First read, so we don't need.
I thought this was listed to be as a voting item on our agenda.
First reading.
But it's also listed as first reading.
It's listed as a voted item, but it has first reading on the sheet itself.
Right. It is a first reading.
Okay, if we want to do it as a first reading, then it's a moot point.
Yeah, right.
And we just have the discussion with the attorney and principals and bring that back.
Make those adjustments and then bring it back to you in the August meeting. We would like to have a vote in August because that is very true. The recreation groups will be starting up, and we want to be sure we've got everything in place. So we'll, we'll research that piece, see if we can add some clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Johnson, we'll turn it over to Superintendent Comments.
All right, thanks, Dr. Cash. Members of the board, summer traditionally is a little bit slower time, but it is still a busy time. We have done our first teacher orientation for new teachers. We have divided that up into smaller groups this year to make it a little more intimate and personal. And so we, we had our first group of teachers come in last week for orientation, and I was very delighted to see that we have some local students that are returning to the area to enter the teaching profession. We anticipate nearly a hundred new hires this summer, so we'll keep you updated as to how that progresses. Curriculum Review Week was held back in June, and some of you folks attended Curriculum Review Week, and I think left with a very favorable impression of the work that our teachers were doing there at Curriculum Review Week. We've got a couple other events that are coming up. Our end of year, our end of year review will be held August the fourth from nine o'clock to four o'clock at the Charles Mack Center, and so all of you are welcome to attend that day-long event if you would like. End of Year Review is when we meet with all of our principals, assistant principals, instructional facilitators, and teachers to review our data and to see how we did on our performance last school year in each of our priority areas. We will also be having Leadership Academy Week, the week of August the fifth through the seventh. That will be held at ADR. And Leadership Academy Week is an opportunity for our administrators to be brought up to speed on legislative changes and other updates that are made each year before the kickoff of the new school year. This year, we're also looking at a special day, a partnership with Appalachian State University, in which we will be going to Boone that day, August the eighth, for a meeting there at the Department of Education in strengthening our relationship with Appalachian State University. Since last Monday night, we have received word from Detwiler, which was the presenter at your committee of the whole. They have invited us to be part of a STEM immersion day at their, at their factory there in Huntersville. The date will either be September the nineteenth or the twenty-fourth. We haven't nailed that date down yet. But Detwiler has invited us to bring a math, a science, and a guidance counselor, folks from each of our high schools, and to be on their facility that day to dig a little deeper into STEM education and promoting apprenticeship programs in our school system. So we're pretty excited about that. ISS has also been in the news quite a bit over the last few weeks. We were published in Education Week, which is a trade journal for public education, and the Heckinger Report, that report has been written but not published yet, but we will be posting those on our websites, and so hopefully, everybody can take a look at that. It's very flattering to see the school system get national news attention. We also have a report that was published last week in the American Society of Quality. It was written by Dr. Melanie Taylor, and we will be getting that posted very soon so that everybody can read that. And then, most of you have already seen the story from the U.S. Department of Education about our I-Three grant, and we'll be posting that story on our website as well. Dr. Taylor did take a group of teachers to Greenville, Tennessee, two weeks ago, and presented at a blended learning academy. That was thirty school districts from across Tennessee that wanted to know what we were doing here in ISS with blended learning. And so Joanna Jester, Gabriel Davis, and Erin Waller were teachers that got to go along with that trip, and we certainly are proud of them and thank them for representing our district so well. Tomorrow and Wednesday, Dr. Taylor, along with Dr. Bowden Nutting and Patrick Obley, are attending a meeting in Atlanta, Georgia. It was an invitation, by invitation meeting from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. We're very excited about that. I think there are thirteen school systems from across America and been invited to be part of that meeting, and it is entitled, "Mastery Planning For Innovative Peer Districts Forum." The exciting part of that, about this, is not only will ISS be sharing some of the things that we've been doing with blended learning in our district, and sharing with neighbors and colleagues from around the United States, but after the meeting, the Gates Foundation is going to identify two to three districts to fund additional work in the area of blended learning. So cross your fingers, we may be one of those districts. We also have some good news from North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. We have two of our folks that have been accepted into the aspiring superintendents fellows program. This is an initiative to increase the pool of highly qualified candidates to serve as superintendents in North Carolina. Dr. Ron Hargrave was our last participant, and of course, he, he did very well because he was offered a position after completing the program. But I'm very pleased to announce that Dr. Melanie Taylor has been accepted into the program, and will start that work this fall, along with Dr. Alvera Lassane. And so both these ladies, it's quite an honor. It's a very competitive process, and so we're very, very proud of them and wish them well as they begin that year-long process. This program is funded by the Z. Smith Rentals Foundation and is housed at Wake Forest University. ISS has been very successful in spreading our leadership across the state, and we have a number of our former administrators that are now serving superintendent roles across North Carolina. We're very proud of that. We are very fortunate in our school system to have many community-based partners, and one of our largest and most effective partnerships is with the NAACP. And for the last decade, the local NAACP has sponsored a back-to-school, stay-in-school rally, and we're very pleased to announce that that rally will be held this year on Saturday, August the ninth, at State's For High School, commencing at nine-thirty in McGray Auditorium. They have a full morning of activities planned for the students and for the parents, and we're very excited this year that our middle school and high school students that will be in attendance will also be traveling to the Career Academy down in Troutman to take a tour of that facility. So add that to your calendar and attend if at all possible. Our Read to Achieve Reading Camps, believe it or not, are coming to a close this week. This Thursday will be the last day for the reading camps. Those are being held at Union Grove, Troutman Elementary, NB Mills, and East Elementary. We had three hundred and forty students in our reading camps. That was twenty-two percent of our third graders this year. Those camps have gone very, very, very well, and those students will be taking their state exam this Thursday. So we are looking for volunteers to serve as proctors for the testing, if anybody would like to help out with, with that initiative. We are continuing to be very, very busy this summer. Tomorrow, we will be interviewing assistant principals for some openings that were created after the hiring of our principals that moved up a few weeks ago. So it is a very, very busy time of the year, and there's starting to be a little bit of excitement and buzz in the air as we get ready to open school one month from now. Our early colleges will act, those students will actually come back to end of July. So it's, it's, summer is passing very, very quickly, and we're all working very, very hard to get ready for the return of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That concludes our open meeting agenda for tonight. Thank you all for coming. We do need to go into a closed session to discuss a personnel issue. Have a motion to that effect, please.
I'll have it. Dr. Cash, according to North Carolina General Statute one forty, General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one, make a motion to the board entering the closed session to discuss a personnel issue. to discuss a personnel issue.
Second, the motion. Second, hold on a favor, please, sir. Okay, we're in a closed session. Thank you.